Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's June 20th, 2023 City Council meeting. We would ask that everyone please respectfully silence any electronic devices. At this time, we'll call on Councilmember Ronnie Wall for tonight's invocation.
Pray with me. Loving heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessings and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and farther, to be the best that we can be. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is a recognition of accreditation for Burlington Arboretum at Willowbrook Park. At this time, we'll recognize Recreation and Parks Director Tony Lawes. Good evening, Tony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here, and we're really, really proud of our arboretum tonight. I want to introduce some people we have guests here and everything that make sure they get recognized. Along the second to last row, we have Janet Latham. She's... I'll talk about it anyway. Janet Latham, she's on our Arboretum Advisory Board and also the New Leaf Board. Janice Burgess is right next to her. Janice is sort of semi-retired now, but a big part of the Arboretum program when she was with New Leaf Society and Lynn Raven, and so we're glad to have her, and she's just had the Greenway name for her. So proud of you, Janice. Next to Janice is Charlotte Zell. Did I get that right? She's an intern with Katie Schneider, who was at the end over there. Katie is the executive director of the New Leaf Society now. And on the back row, we have Gay Lander. She's also Arboretum Advisory Board member and on the New Leaf Board. So we're really holding to New Leaf and all the money and effort they put into the Arboretum. Now, we have some of our staff. I'm going to call him up in a minute with Jason Barnhill. He's our director at the Arboretum Horticulturists. Amy Barber, right next to him, she's actually water resources, but recreation, really, so she does a lot of work at the Arboretum. And behind her is Matt Strange. He's Jason's assistant. And then next to Matt is Casey Gorrell, our parks superintendent. So they all have a big part in the Arboretum. And Jason, would you like to come up and say a few words about the accreditation?
Welcome, Jason.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I guess the accreditation is the only arboretum accreditation that they have available, and this is an international organization that puts this on. So this is kind of a big deal for the city of Burlington and the Arboretum. So this was a year-long process, and I want to thank Amy and Janet Latham for helping me with the application for that. We had to put a lot of things together to get that in. So I think I sent y'all some of the numbers, but we're one of only three Level Two Arboretums in North Carolina, so pretty impressive, along with Elon. So one of our neighbors has another Level Two. So we want to thank y'all for supporting the Arboretum and kind of giving us everything we need to get that done and keep it looking beautiful. And this is kind of like a city effort that goes into this. We've had a lot of departments that have helped us put this together, so I want to thank everybody. We've got a lot of department heads here, and they've all kicked in a lot of staff for that, so thank y'all very much.
Yep. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, Tony. At this time, we'll... Next on our agenda is a proclamation, so at this time, we'll recognize Tony Lawes once again, Parks and Recreation Month, month of July. So Tony, you want to come forward? We'll read the proclamation, have you say a few words about that, and we'll maybe take a picture here. Proclamation: Recognizing Parks and Recreation Month, July 2023. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Burlington, North Carolina, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas park and recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and now therefore I, Mayor Jim Butler, and the Burlington City Council do hereby proclaim the month of July 2023 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Burlington, this 20th day of June 2023. Let's give our arboretum and our Recreation and Parks Program.
Is it unusual to be designated accredited arboretum in this little amount of time? It seems pretty amazing to me.
It feels like a year was a really long time for us to put that together. There was a lot of things to go into that, creating the advisory board. That was a big step, so I think Rachel Kelly and... Who helped with that? Was that Rhett? Setting that up, yes. So Rhett Davis, they put a lot of work into that. Once we got all the pieces in, we sent the application in, and we didn't have any follow-up questions. So that was pretty impressive that we didn't have to provide any additional information. I think that kind of goes to show that we had all our ducks in a row when we sent that in, so.
What I really meant was not so much the application process, but from the inception of the Arboretum, it seems pretty quick.
Absolutely. For a garden that's only three years old, I don't know of any other ones that have gotten an accreditation that soon. I know Elon's really old. The other one is High Point University's Conservancy. They've probably been in operation maybe 10 years that they've been working on that, and they just got theirs about the month before we got ours. It was pretty speedy. Yes, ma'am.
That's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Ms. Hykes, there's only 14 arboretum in North Carolina that's been accredited. Nine of them are Level One, which is one step below ours. We started off at Level Two, which there's three of those, and then there's one Level Three and one Level Four. So we're way up the list, and so we're going to get even better, aren't we, Jason?
It's getting on an escalator.
That's right. And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's always a pleasure to brag about Recreation and Parks, and certainly July is the National Recreation and Parks Month every year, but we'd like to take a minute to talk about our local program. That's the most important to us around here and all the citizens that live here, and we're very proud of our Recreation and Parks Program. We have a lot of help from our city council, our city administration, and former city councils. I came here a couple centuries ago, and we didn't have a whole lot, but now we have really put a lot more into our facilities. Some major parks have been built. The Arboretum transformed one of our older parks into a really city treasurer now that has people using it all the time, either walking their kids playing or their dogs, walking their dogs. I mean, if you go by there any time when it's not raining, of course, and it's got people loving using that park, so we're very happy with that. And we're very happy with all the other projects we've got going on. The stadium project, the soccer club that's playing right now, and we're using part of the event space, not all of it yet, but it'll be ready pretty soon, and we'll have that to look forward to down the road. But that's a great new project. We have a pre-construction meeting for the synthetic soccer fields at Springwood Park tomorrow morning, and construction should get started at least by next week on that, and we're hoping it'll be finished at least by October 1st, maybe a little earlier, depending on the weather. And then we're currently working on the pickleball courts, the design, they'll be getting that ready to go out bids and getting a lot of positive feedback from people that play pickleball in this community that can't wait to get those courts in use. So we have a lot to be thankful for here in Burlington, and I'm very proud of our Recreation and Parks Department. I'm very proud of all our staff that work hard every day, and all of our volunteer supporters like New Leaf Society, because that's important for us to be able to do what we do, that we've got community support, and we've got a great staff, and we have the support of our elected leaders and our city administration to provide the best Recreation and Parks Program that we can. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony, and congratulations. Our next item is Code of Ethics, disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll recognize our city clerk, Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda.
Thank you. The next item is the adoption of our agenda. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone on council has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A: To approve the reclassification of a Civil Engineer II position, Level 36, to a Principal Engineer position, Level 38 in engineering, effective July 1st, 2023. Item B: To approve the Eastern Piedmont Home Program Consortium Agreement and authorize the endorsement by the mayor and certification by city attorney of said agreement. Item C: To approve an annual agreement for fiscal year 2023-2024 between the city of Burlington and Witsit Fire Department, Inc., for first responder, fire protection, and emergency medical technician services, effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. Item D: To approve Budget Amendment 2023-37 for the allocation of grant funds and donations received by Recreation and Parks Cronotl Senior Center to support the Operation Fan Heat Relief Program and other supplies and equipment purchases. Item E: To approve Budget Amendment 2023-38 for the allocation of grant funds and donations received by Burlington Animal Services to support spaying and neutering of community cats through the Mighty Mousers Program and medical care of animals. Item F: To accept a grant award from the National Recreation and Parks Association in the amount of $70,000 and approve Associated Budget Amendment 2023-39 to support mentoring initiatives at Burlington Recreation and Parks, including the King KING Academy Mentoring Program at North Park. Item G: To approve Budget Amendment 2023-40 for all funds as of fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. Item H: To approve Budget Amendment 2023-41 to recognize donations made to the Recreation and Parks Department throughout fiscal year 2022-2023. And Item I: To approve an amendment to the inter-local agreement between the city of Burlington and Guilford County for the regulation and operation of Guilford McIntosh Park. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda as presented.
Agreed.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Thank you. At this point, we will move into our public hearings. We have a couple of public hearings designated this evening. Item One, a public hearing, has been scheduled to consider a voluntary annexation petition to annex into the city of Burlington a parcel of land which is contiguous to current city limits, addressed as Zero Ross Street, located on the southwest corner of Lower Hope Dell Road and Ross Street. The parcel is approximately two acres in size and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 140651. At this time, we'll recognize Planning Director Jamie Lawson. Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening, everyone. If you recall, this item was presented to you at the work session on June 5th. This is a voluntary annexation. The property is contiguous, as you can see on the map, to city limits. Staff is recommending this annexation. There's an ordinance included in your packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any problems, any questions for Jamie at this time? Okay, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments. We'll entertain any public comments from this side of the room if there's anyone that would like to speak on item one. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on item one? Hearing no public comments, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Public hearing is closed. At this time, we'll entertain any questions or discussion or a motion on item one.
I'm happy to adopt the annexation ordinance for the contiguous voluntary annexation of a parcel located at Zero Ross Street, effective at midnight on June 20th, 2023.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to item two. Item Two: A public hearing has been scheduled to consider a voluntary annexation petition to annex into the city of Burlington a portion of a parcel of land which is contiguous to current city limits, addressed as 2635 West Front Street, and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 115754. The property is 20.072 acres in size, including recently recombined parcel identification numbers 115754, 115864, and 115865. Once again, we'll recognize our planning director, Jamie Lawson.
Good evening again. This item was also presented to you at the June 5th work session. This is a request for annexation that's been facilitated by Elon University. It helps to further the development of the site. That includes uses that are related for the university only as part of their sustainable living and learning farm development. Staff does recommend this annexation as well, and there's an ordinance included in your packet for your consideration. There is representation from Elon in the audience in case you have questions for them.
We got a fair amount of conversation at the work session about this. Is there any questions for Jamie or for the representative from Elon University? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments on item two. Is there anyone from this side of the room that would like to speak on item two on our Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on item two? Hearing no public comments. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? At this time, we'll entertain discussion or a motion on the adoption of item two.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt the annexation ordinance for the contiguous voluntary annexation of a parcel of property located at 2635 West Front Street, effective at midnight June 30th, 2023.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. At this time, we'll move into new business. New business, item three on the agenda. City council will consider a request from St. Mark's Church to hold an immersion baptism service in the city-owned Lake Kamak at the Marina on August 27th, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m., contingent upon meeting all requirements of the special event permit application process. At this time, we'll recognize our recreation supervisor of special events, Sean Eckebury. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. How are y'all doing?
All good.
Yeah, like you said, we received a special event permit application for the annual St. Mark's or St. Mark's Church baptism out at Lake Kamak. They would like to host that event on Sunday, August 27th, with the event spanning from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I know I'm here to speak as well, but I believe they have our representative, Ms. Jessica Flake, in the back. If y'all have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Jessica, how many years have we been doing this?
16 at the lake, but this is about the 22nd.
Okay. Long standing.
Yep. Any questions concerning this item? At this time, we'll entertain a motion on this request.
Mayor, I move to approve the request.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. Our next item, item four. City council will consider appointments to the 2023 City of Burlington Advisory Boards and Commissions. At this time, we'll recognize our public information specialist, John Vernon.
Mayor and council, this is the annual appointments of two advisory boards and commissions. You received a packet with applications on Thursday, and I'm here if you have any questions for the applicant, about the applications.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we have considered this at the meeting in July and have a little more conversation. It'd be perfect. I haven't had time to get through the book list, but I'd get to, and I need to give a little more thought personally, so.
Okay. Would it be, what if we had this on the work session agenda for some discussion and then vote at the...
I think that would be good and put it on the subject on the next night's meeting, if that's a possibility.
Yep. So the terms that would expire by ordinance just carry forward until we... Yep.
I just want to say that we need some more applicants. I mean, I spent hours on it, and it's very difficult. I know you did a great job trying to put it together, but there just are not enough people who have applied.
We will do another round of promotion for applicants. We, in particular, if anyone's listening tonight, we do need applicants for the community police advisory team in particular, and the tree and appearance commission are some of the ones we're very lacking in. So if anyone out there would like to apply, please do.
Well, I've reached out to a few folks, so hopefully we've received an application or two, because I like Catholic. There's just a shortage, and it's very important work. You know, I look around the room, and tonight there are a lot of those that serve on our advisory boards and commissions, and we couldn't do the work we do without them, so.
And we're not the only ones facing this problem. This is pretty universal across the state now.
I'd second that motion.
You good on that?
Second the motion.
Herr, was you done?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just checking. Okay, so we have a motion to discuss this at the work session and then put it on the council agenda following that. Motion and second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item, moving on to public comments. At this time, we'll call for public comments on any topics that are not on the agenda. Each speaker is asked respectfully to limit your term to five minutes. Our city clerk will be keeping up with our time. Is that right, Beverly? Okay, you've got that. Our first speaker this evening is Lee Johnson of 2021 Trail 5 Burlington to speak about code enforcement and some neighborhood issues. Welcome.
Thank y'all. Thank you for your time. I reside at 2021 Trail 5 Burlington. Been there 12 years. First house of Everbolt. The tax evaluations I've kind of known has gone up along with everything else, groceries and gas and everything else has gone up. But I'm, because I'm, I know I have some issues with my neighborhood, and the evaluations, not speaking about them, but I'm talking about these other properties. The people are not keeping their properties up like they should. This first picture that I'm going to fix to show you is across the street from me. The man has eight vehicles in his yard in the evening time. That is not, makes my neighborhood look terrible. It will bring the value down of my house. So my value's up. So my value's up, somebody comes through the neighborhood wanting to buy my house or buy somebody else's house, they can look, that's trash, that's junky. This man has commercial property in the City of Burlington, and he parks two of his commercial vehicles all day long in his driveway and parks them there. There's no sense him having these other vehicles out here. There's two Jeeps up here with no tags on them. Code enforcement has been to this house one time before, but nothing else has been done. And I'm gonna pass this picture along and let you take a look at it. The second house is on Trail 8. It's 403 Trail 8. There's a single man that lives there in that house. And I don't know why code enforcement hasn't gone to this man's house, but this whole house is totally covered with vines, trees, bushes growing inside his house. The man must not have no money to keep his yard up, but I'm gonna pass them to him. You can only see the front door of the house. That's four houses from my house. There's no sense me having to put up with this in my neighborhood. Here's the next one. Faye Boswell, I don't know if you all know her, she owns a house two doors down from me. It's a rental house. There's a lady moved in it. She needs some help, and I'm sorry to say that, but she needs some help. She's a whore. Faye is gone to try to get her out of the house because she's not paying no rent at all. Well, the lady that's living in the house has filed two suits against Faye Boswell. I don't know what they are. But code enforcement's been to this house before, and she's moved it all underneath the shed and all in the backyard, which is called bugs and rats for the neighbors. And I'll pass them to them and pin them up.
You saying she moved stuff inside her house, outside her, outside her house?
Everything's outside. The whole, when she moved in, she brought in four trailer loads and put it all out in the driveway. And I called Faye and I called code enforcement and said, "We can't handle this. There's too much junk and trash all the way out in front of the, in the front of the house." She's moved it all the way back in the back, underneath the shed, and in the backyard. I don't know what can be done about this, but this hurts my value of my house right And I'd like for somebody to take, take the run with it and see if we can get some of this cleaned up in my neighborhood. The Trail 5 is a nice area. People always want to move to that area. It's always been nice. But if my valuation's gonna be high, I don't want to have to look at all this mess in my neighborhood.
Good point.
This is another picture of a rental house on the corner of Trail 5 and Trail 8. Nothing's been done in that house in 12 years that I know of, and it needs some yard work done to it to make it halfway decent. But if y'all could please contact the owners of these houses or get the code enforcement people to go out and get something, taking care about these houses, I would appreciate it.
Well, absolutely. You know, we have Fix It Burlington. There's a lot of ways you can, you can respond to Fix It Burlington, but a really successful ways to stand in front of us and ask, so.
Well, I'd rather, I'd rather be in front of you and tell you what I'm up against. I like to sit on my front porch. I don't want to like seeing all them cars sitting across my driveway in the yard. No sense somebody having that many vehicles in the yard. If I'm not mistaken, Guilford County only allows you two or three to a yard, and they gotta be tagged. Zone, code issue people has gone out and told the man where all the cars are. He's got a swimming pool in the backyard the man has not removed, and a treehouse. There's, shouldn't be there.
Well, we'll take, we'll take the information. We appreciate you being here. Your time is up, but we'll take the information, Craig. We'll be sure, and we'll absolutely get somebody.
I appreciate y'all's time.
To looking at it. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just want to say, this issue about the cars, the abandoned cars or cars that are inoperable is a problem all over the city.
I understand that, ma'am. And I agree.
I'm just curious how we can approach this in a way that is more helpful than just in your neighborhood. I'm saying your neighborhood's important, as all these other ones are too, that have the same problem.
I understand.
And I'm not sure why people hold on to them because they can't drive them.
Well, I know, and I want to stop you there just one second. I do know code enforcement did take one of the man, the gentleman's cars away, towed it away, because it'd been sitting there. And I don't want to get into any of the other stuff, but somebody told him just to put a fake tag on the car.
We just want people to comply with the law.
I understand.
We're not trying to punish people, but we would let people to get rid of their junk cars.
I just want, I just, like I said, my valuation's gone up. I'd like to have my neighborhood cleaned up a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, the trails, if you go back, it's one of the, 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 the places in our community, yours has got it, and it was developed in the seventies and recent age. And it's still here. It's, it's a wonderful community. I had a chance during our last campaign to walk that community, and it's really good people there. But I'm not saying this is the norm, but there are certain neighbors or certain pieces of property that certainly create, would have to create an issue for the people around it who really do a nice job of maintaining their property. And it's, and it's difficult, and it's gonna be difficult for code enforcement. But certainly, I'm sure, Jamie, that someone will take a look at it and see how it follows That's a challenging issue, I know.
Yes, sir. Yep, we'll definitely take a look at it. I'd like to see the pictures, too.
Yep. We'll hang on to these and see that you get them. One of the meetings concluded. Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Jessica Merricks, 126 Evergreen Drive in Pittsboro, North Carolina, 27312. Welcome. Discussing PFAS in the water system.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dr. Jessica Merricks, Assistant Professor of Biology at Elon University. I'm here again representing my town, Pittsboro, which draws its drinking water directly from the Hall River, and also the Elon Burlington community that I love to come to work to every day. I'm back to continue my appeal to the council to do everything in your power to remove PFAS and one-four dioxide from all wastewater discharge, and to also educate your citizens about the issues of these chemicals in their drinking water as well. I was just here a month ago, and we had a good back and forth conversation. Yes, PFAS is everywhere. It's in everybody's blood in here today. We are all exposed to it, and none of us asked for that. The situation with the drinking water is getting better, and we are so grateful to the Hall River Assembly and the Southern Environmental Law Firm for spearheading efforts to improve the drinking water issue. However, for my community and for so many others, every day that companies are allowed to dump PFAS chemicals in any amount, no matter how small, into their wastewater is one day too many for me. The EPA has considered these chemicals to be of such great concern that last year, they reduced their health advisory limits from 70 parts per trillion down to 0.004 parts per trillion for PFOA. PFOA is just one of the 9,000 existing PFAS compounds. The research is clear, none of these chemicals should be in our bodies. The National Academies of Science, Engineering, and Medicine have issued clear guidance that any person with blood levels above two parts per trillion of combined PFAS should be prioritizing screenings with their doctors for dyslipidemia, hypertensive disorders of pregnancy, and breast cancer. For the unfortunate group with blood levels above 20 parts per trillion, of which we have in my community in Pittsboro, additional screenings for thyroid function, kidney cancer, testicular cancer, and ulcerative colitis are recommended. While, of course, it is not your responsibility, council, to protect us from all exposure, we do expect and hope that, at the very least, the water we drink and cook with is not perpetuating this terrible problem. The last time me and my co-founder of Clean Hall River were here, we heard about all the great things the council is working on and how Burlington is a model for other municipalities in the area. I'm not here to argue that point at all. I'm here to ask that city leadership maintain their sense of urgency to address this issue of PFAS in our drinking water and wastewater. In May, we heard from Mr. Patterson, I believe, who mentioned that the city was waiting for Elevate Textiles to share information with the council about how they're going to remediate their PFAS information. What can we do to move that process along faster? Are there opportunities for you to adjust the NPDES permit that requires, in order to require pretreatment of this company? What are your plans for the biosolids, which also contain PFAS and other damaging chemicals? What are you doing now to sort of prevent those issues from continuing to damage the City of Burlington community and also my community down in Pittsboro? When the residents, when can the residents of Burlington expect to hear your plans about how you'll get your drinking water in compliance with forthcoming guidelines? As you know, in 2022, the updated, the updated guidelines are much more strict, and I know that lab studies are not, lab testing is not quite at the right resolution. But I did read online that you were working on a pilot program or some sort of process where you're gonna figure out how you're gonna get water, the water in compliance. I'd like to hear about what that process is gonna be. When Pittsboro was faced with dangerously high levels of contaminants in our drinking water, my organization, along with other members of our community, helped the city partner with the local co-op to provide free reverse osmosis filtered water for all city water users. While this short-term solution came after years of knowing about the issue, we were grateful for that gesture. How are you partnering with communities to help educate and protect the people of Burlington while we wait for proper filtration? Clean Hall River is dedicated to education and advocacy around clean drinking water. As part of our work, we have connected with community members along the Hall River to elevate the voices of impacted communities. Today, I have with me a group of Elon Academy scholars, all back there looking so fantastic for their very first city council meeting. These are high school students from across Alamance County who have demonstrated scholastic aptitude and a desire to be among the first in their families to attend college. This year, I had the privilege of teaching them about civic engagement and environmental advocacy. Two of them are brave enough and have chosen to write statements, and they would like to address their council this evening. Thank you for giving them a chance to meet you and to address their city leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ariel Jaclyn. Is that right? 3027, 3027 Spanish Oak Hill Road, Snow Camp.
Good evening. My name is Ariel, and I live in Alamance County. PFAS are man-made chemicals that have been used for decades in everyday consumer products and have now polluted our water. High levels of PFAS in our city's drinking water are showing up in our bloodstream, which could lead to many health effects. Health effects such as increased cholesterol levels, high chances of blood pressure, high blood pressure, potential, and some definite birth defects of children, even affecting the mother. I've never heard of PFAS until I met Professor Merricks at Elon, which, which to me is sad. It's sad that our community is going through a serious problem, and there's not a lot of people knowing about it. How can we change something without people knowing what the problem is? I don't believe I would have ever known what PFAS are or the consequences of consuming too much of it without her saying it. The only thing I ask is to let the community know about what's happening and to show compassion for the families, children, and seniors of our beautiful state. Thank you.
Next, we have Victoria Choi, 2339 Campbell Loop, Burlington, North Carolina, 27215. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, members of the council and community of Burlington. My name is Victoria, and I live in Burlington. I attend the School of Science and Math at Durham. I am here with Elon Academy to speak up as a voice in our community. At home, we use a Brita water filter, and I personally carry around a Brita water filter at school. However, recently, I learned that it may not be enough, the filter that I trusted to clean the water fountain that I was somewhat skeptical of. I question the water at my school dorm every time there's a brown shower water from tank leakage, or, it doesn't happen frequently, but when it happens once, you happen to question what happened to the standards of clean water at one of the most prestigious high schools in America. This is understandable for third world countries or countries without access to water, if water isn't a priority. However, it is a concern when we don't question the standards because we trust that our water is clean. What are the standards for clean drinking water in America? We don't question the standards, and with other urgent matters such as busing and school systems, it is easier to be satisfied with the maintenance of given standards. Burlington, North Carolina is in compliance with the standards of EPA's guidelines, standards in which, again, we are in compliance to, but standards that we shouldn't conform to. We shouldn't wait for the laws to change if we want to be a role model as a city, as a community. What should the city councils responsibly be to urgently care for this matter and go beyond the standards that we conform to? How does a city prioritize, and what ways are we advocating for our citizens? Thank you.
Thank you. That is all of our public comments this evening. We appreciate everyone being here and maintaining the timeline. Thank you for doing that. Next is our city council comments. Any city council comments? Anyone have any comments? The only thing I will say is, on the topic of PFAS, I'd really like to thank city staff for Bob Patterson and his group, David Huffman, going back to 2019, for really spearheading the efforts to be ensure that we're working with those to consistently improve what is put into our environment. And just as a reminder, PFAS is everywhere since the 1940s. Lipstick, mascara, food packaging, the carpet in your house, your vehicle, it's rampant in society, and drinking water's a small portion of it, albeit an important portion. And Burlington's still gonna maintain the standard that it set many, many years ago to be an original water provider and doing everything we can to maintain the high levels of quality in our water system that our citizens deserve and demand, and being good neighbors to our partners downstream as well. So to all of our city staff that have really spearheaded this event, I want to tell you how much we appreciate you and the efforts. And I know you're still working on some things most recent, and thanks for your efforts on that. We look forward to the outcome and seeing what we have there. Any other council comments?
If I'm not mistaken, I believe several of the manufacturers that might have been involved in some of this, these issues have taken substantial measures to remedy those issues. Now, obviously, it's not gonna be solved overnight, but Bob, if you may want to speak to that in terms of some of the efforts that people, that some of these industries have made in terms of the improvements they've done.
Thank you, Harold. Yes, we're working with, with several of our industries. They're assessing their production lines. Some have put in closed loop systems to capture PFAS. Others are implementing product substitutions to go PFAS-free, and within, you know, a very short period of time, we're expecting to see large reductions in our affluent values of PFAS.
Thank you. Bob, we appreciate that feedback. Anything else from council? If not, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye. At this time, we will adjourn.